I'm going to call the American County Council meeting of February 6th to order. As far as Hefner has the pledge.
The pledge of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McGehee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Right here.
As far as Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Rinsky.
Here.
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes, here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
All present, Mr. Watt and Mrs. Ferraro by phone.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 2nd?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to go to courtesy of the floor and I'm going to go, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm going to go down what we have in our sign-in sheet. You have five minutes to speak. I would ask you when you come up if you would state your name for clerk and if I can remember my passcode for some reason. All right, I will be timing you and.
How many minutes is it? Really?
Just give me a second here.
You didn't say five, right, sir?
Yeah, five minutes. What I'm going to do is this, I have people signed up. Now, when we're finished, if there's people that want to talk but you didn't get the sign-in sheet, you're free to ask to come up and speak. So, I'll start with the first name I have and if I get them wrong, I apologize right up front and you can correct this up here.
Sandra Pizzolato.
All right, first I have Sandra Pizzolato. Sandra, if you would come up, please. Just spell your name for the.
Okay. Do you want me to spell it? Are you okay? Okay. Oh, thanks. I'm not good with this.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Pizzolato. I've been judge of elections in Allentown Township since 2001 and we had 3,700 registered voters in November this past year. I believe the electronic poll books, also called the e-poll books, are a necessity for the 2020 primary election. With the state changing the deadline to register to vote to just 15 days before the election, there will be numerous last-minute changes. If e-poll books are used, these changes can be made electronically and facilitate the update. By contracts, the paper poll books will have to be printed ahead of time and be accompanied by numerous additional sheets of information. If the paper poll books are used, the inspectors will not only have to check in them, but they will have many additional sheets to check for the voter's name, therefore significantly increasing the sign-in time. Another improvement e-poll books will have is that the judge of elections will not have to contact the election office to find out why a Northampton County voter's name is not in the paper poll book. The e-poll book will inform the worker of the reason the person cannot vote, as such as wrong polling place, voted by mail, not a Republican or a Democrat in the primary. With the state changing the deadline for the mailed ballots to 8:00 PM on Election Day, they're also essential. With the e-poll books, as ballots arrive, updates can be immediately processed. Also, if e-poll books are used, the absentee and the no-excuse mail-in ballots can be counted during the day at the election office. The e-poll books will show if someone voted by mail and will inform the worker that the person cannot vote on the machine. If the e-poll books are not used, then the mailed ballots cannot be counted until all the pages from all the paper poll books have been scanned to see if someone showed up at the polling place to vote besides sending in a ballot. There will not be a final count for the election for a long time. I have spoken with other poll workers in Lehigh County where the e-poll books have been used for six years. They all thought they were a vast improvement over the paper ones by speeding up the voting process. Therefore, I recommend county council approve the funding for the e-poll books, which will increase our efficiency and productivity in the voting process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we will go on to Gail Saunders. If you would come up and confirm that with the clerk.
My name is Gail Saunders and I am here to speak in support of the vote by the election board not to use the electronic sign-in books for the 2020 elections. Given the fiasco in the fall with the new voting machines and the disaster of the Iowa caucuses, it's obvious to me that introducing yet more electronics at the polls is not the way to go. It's your responsibility to provide a means for obtaining an accurate vote count in Northampton County. I think it would be a dereliction of this duty for you to approve the use of these electronic books and I urge you to support the recommendations of the election board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next I have, is it Don Moore?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. If you could come up and confirm that with the clerk.
Yes, Donald Moore. I haven't been here, I only recognize two people here on the dais. I used to come and complain about farm on preservation, some of the candidates that are now here may remember that. Things have changed. Figure out the polling thing, people. I never dreamt that, you know, that would be, I'm not blaming you, but you got to figure that one out. The paper books would be great if you can print them, otherwise we need something. Okay, I'm here tonight, got about three minutes to get to something that pertains to the agenda. This is the background. I'm from Plainfield Township, I'm a former EAC member as of January, I'm now on the zoning hearing board, so I had to leave the EAC. Of course, Synagro wanted to place their biosalts plant in our township, which you may recall and heard about. The opposition to this plant was unanimous, except for one person, that's Nolan Perrin, you know, relative of the guy who founded the landfill on which it would be placed. The Delaware Riverkeeper, Clean Air Council, Sierra Club, community activist and concerned citizens, Mr. Dietz came out early on and it went on for two years and 10 months and near the end, Ms. Rinsky came out and supported us. The outcome's great, we can preserve our water and air quality, but we must remain vigilant. In October 2018, at a Plainfield Township Board meeting, a representative of Green Knight, which was part of this project, proposed project, represented that sludge is safe, it is tested, we know what's in it. Well, it turns out, you know, we know it's tested infrequently, sometimes only once per year, one truckload. Only nine or 10 substances are currently regulated and are tested for. Synagro stated it would test for whatever was required if additional substances are, which is nine metals, if additional substances were added to the regulated list, they would test for them. Synagro entered into an agreement with EPA three years ago, failing to, after failing to implement controls and monitoring of mercury in accordance with new standards that have been implemented. So, we really didn't have much faith in them saying, hey, if something's added. But the problem is, is there's a lot more things than nine. There's troubling signs in Pennsylvania associated with biosalts during this, during this project and the pushback and the DEP's involvement. What we discovered is that there's state pressure to approve, there was state pressure to approve this facility. Maybe they're getting, maybe they want to, you know, work well with the EPA because we need to do something with biosalts, we do know that. But we don't need to get rid of New Jersey's and Connecticut's. The DEP was legally challenged by Plainfield Township to show they did properly issue a waiver to partially fill a pond that's adjacent to the proposed facility that's connected to an aquifer. They never developed the evidence to show that they had previously issued a waiver properly. They just ignored our request for that and we had to sue them. They simply withdrew the, that particular opinion, but then they said later on verbally, they wouldn't put it in print, that they were going to issue the permits and not require a permit to fill the pond further. DEP management encouraged Plainfield Township officials to approve this project, which is completely inappropriate. That was done verbally somewhere, I haven't found out in what form that happened, but of course, that's not appropriate. In November 2018, the EPA Inspector General released a report on biosalts finding that 352 unregulated pollutants are in it, including 61 that are currently, quote, "currently unregulated and considered acutely hazardous, hazardous or priority of pollutants in other EPA programs." So, we really don't know what's in this stuff. Why am I talking about this? I'm talking about this regarding, I think I'm supporting this resolution of Ms. Rinsky's to support the House bill, federal House Bill 535. This needs to come from the top, you know, funding, if the EPA changes something or the law changes, the EPA has to change as a result of that. I think that's where we need to go because it looks like in Pennsylvania, the picture right now is not good, based on what I just said. There's a House, House bill in Pennsylvania, I'm sorry, Senate bill, that was approved narrowly in the Senate to dump fracking wastewater on dirt and gravel roads across the entire state of Pennsylvania. I live on a gravel road. I stood out there with a representative of the, what's the one that handles the stormwater? Conservation District, a representative of the Pennsylvania Dirt and Gravel Roads Program, came out from Penn State and they told me.
Give me a second, I just wanted you to know.
Thank you. Told me how worried they are about things washing down the road into the stream. They want to put these toxins in the wastewater on the roads and you can imagine that most dirt and gravel roads are along steep slopes and there's streams down below. It's screwy. So, if it comes up, I'm sure you know about this, Ms. Rinsky, I urge you to think about supporting that as well.
That's HB 1100.
Thank you, I didn't know the number.
And they took that out.
And one last comment, I urge you also to support the, it's a, it's a ordinance to, between Monroe County and Northampton County. I was a chairman of a parks committee in older township in Monroe, they do great things with the parks up there, as you're probably aware.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now, next we have, I have Ethan Habril.
Hey.
Hey, Bril, thank you. Do you want to repeat that for the clerk? You have five minutes.
My name is Ethan Habril. I've worked in the computer industry and when it comes to this e-poll book, all the trouble that we have had with the voting already that has happened, I have serious concerns and what she brought up about addendums to the book is totally false. I worked, I was to the IU Board, I was on the IU Board when they switched over to electronics and they would do the addendum thing, they first did it in paper and then they did it online. When it was on paper, it wasn't really that much, there was only a small N that was being added in after the fact. So, there is not all this supposed, we have to look this up and all this looking stuff up. That's not true. Like I said, I worked in the computer industry, I like computers, a lot of things can be computerized, but this is one thing we need to take our time at, we need to look at a whole lot better, considering the fiasco that we already had, which, hey, somebody should be fired. I worked in the industry and one job I had, if you made one mistake, you're fired. You know, when I submit the report, if it's wrong, your job is finished. When something was done that badly, somebody, somewhere, if not the employee, if not the management above him that was mismanaging it, should be taken care of. If not, definitely when people had zero votes, there was something seriously wrong with the election and possibly sway, trying to sway the election one way or the other. So, to go for an e-book at this point in time, I think is seriously out of the question. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Okay, next I have, excuse me, go back to the glasses. Madalena Hornick is here, she's the chair of the, oh, she can give you her name and her title.
Hi, my name's Maureen Hornick and as of January 23rd, I'm the Chair of the Elections Commission. I'd like to present to you a little background of how we came to this pressure point tonight. Last year, when I first met Charles Dirtinger, early in the fall, we discussed the ESNS voting system and we both agreed at that time that we didn't want electronic poll books. Neither of us were interested in electronic poll books, they weren't on our radar. It was kind of like a sigh of relief for me. He didn't want them, I didn't want them. Come October 31st, Act 77 was passed. Now, the administration should know and the election commission should know about the new rules and the new registration dates and we should be able to plan for the next election. So, many times from November 7th, after we had a disaster fall election, from November 7th to December 3rd, collectively, our previous vice chair, because we couldn't get a hold of our chair, was asking for a meeting. We had a quorum on the commission and we were also asking for a meeting. With the devastation of our November election, we were hoping to resolve it and we wanted to meet for the future elections, we felt we needed to meet. We kept getting ignored for a month. We requested to meet and we were ignored. Now, if we're supposed to work together for effective operation of government, I wouldn't call that working together. So, we didn't meet from September 19th, we finally were granted a meeting December 19th. So, December 19th, by this time, Amy Cozy had received three quotes for electronic poll books. One was from Ask and that was on November 25th. One was from a company called No Ink and that was on November 22nd and the other one was 10x that we're currently reviewing and that was on December 9th. So, when we had our meeting on December 19th, I would have appreciated that this information be presented to us by the administration on December 19th because at that time, I would have known that Charles Dirtinger had moved from never wanting to use an electronic poll book to planning to implement them in the next election. So, when Amy Hass, at the end of the meeting, she suggested to use an electronic poll book for the next election, I was amazed. I thought, this is putting gasoline on a fire. She suggested to use them and at this time, I thought Charles and I were still on the same page. I was surprised that the acting registrar wanted to gamble using another form of electronics immediately after our previous disaster. So, I was thinking, we're not out of the woods from our November election and let's not introduce anything major. I never heard from the elections office again and I never heard from the administration until a few days before our January 23rd meeting, when they sent us the agenda and that sort of thing. I'm just telling you, I'm only one of five commissioners, but I do not want to use an electronic poll book in the next election. So, after that meeting, I reached out to counties that were in our similar situation and to the Department of State of Elections. Sendu, a woman in the Department of State of Elections Division, I learned from her that only six counties in our state use an electronic poll book, Lehigh being the largest county. Currently, the counties using electronic poll books are Luzern, Lehigh, Bradford, Washington, Susquehanna and Wayne. Philadelphia did buy them last year, but Philadelphia did not use them in the last election, claiming they failed in testing and they didn't work. So, that leaves 60 counties in the state coming this election, planning to use paper books. NTS was our printer and NTS, there were rumors throughout the state that they were going to pull out of our state and our administration knew that there were rumors, so they did have time to find an alternative. NTS left five counties in the state in our situation. Those counties were Dauphin, Monroe, Lancaster, Union and Mercer. They all found themselves without an NTS printer. So, I chose to call Dauphin County because their voter registration is about similar to ours and I chose to call Lancaster County because their voter registration is larger. Jerry Feizer and Randall Wagner were a great reference. These election directors had plenty of experience and that's exactly what Tim Banyo said in a public hearing in Harrisburg last week, that experience is what is going to get us through Act 77. Neither county, Lancaster or Dauphin, are considering an electronic poll book system at this time. They are going to pull the PDF as late as possible as they can from the Sure system, put it on a disk and drive it to a printer. They've both reserved.
Sorry, as a courtesy, since you are, there's five minutes, but I'm going to say, if you could like.
I would really like to give you this information.
You're the chair of, and it's, I know it's an important issue, so if you could, if you could just, you know, as quickly as you could, but I, go ahead.
All right, so they've reserved printers. Lancaster County prints 500 books, we only print 350 books. Other counties I talked to, such as Burks, they're going to print in-house and they're going to use supplemental list and we all know the issue with supplemental list, so I won't go there. Okay, so, I also decided I would call somebody local, I called Minuteman Press, I found out that they already have a contract with the county. So, I would like Lamont McClure, in his powers, to take a look at that contract they already have with the county and be able to amend it for paper books. Right now, we're not in there, but I think in his power, he should be able to amend that contract so they can print our books. So, I talked to a woman in Lehigh County, her name is Terry Harkins, she is the assistant to the election registrar. She absolutely loves their e-poll books from 10x, she told me, she loved them, but she said they're not as easy as buying unloaded programming and putting them out there as you'd think, they're a lot of work. They have their share of setbacks because the iPads have gone down and they've had to use paper lists. By law, we still, even if we use an electronic poll book, we have to have a paper list at our polls. So, by law, we have to have paper. So, they house their iPads in a special room, they house them with special charging units, they're called black boxes. They've also purchased industrial cables, so when you look into contract, before you spend any money, I want you to verify that those costs are in there because I don't want them to be added in there later. Because she says that they've had to just add a lot to them since they originally bought them. So, they also had to update the Wi-Fi in their office and they had to special buy computers just for the e-poll book software. So, what I've learned about Act 77 through this and why the press release that Lamont McClure sent has not persuaded me to change my standing. He claims that verifying two separate lists will substantially slow down the lines at the polls and cause confusion. I just want to say, thank you, State of Pennsylvania, and thank you, Lisa Bascola, for actually fixing that for us in Act 77. Act 77 gives our voters more choices with a no-excuse mail-in ballot. Our early voting mail-in ballot opportunity is the longest in the country. We have 50 days before the election that you, as a voter, may go into the elections office, request a ballot, receive a ballot, fill out your ballot and hand it back in, all in the same day. Also, in Act 77, we are permitted to establish election offices throughout the county where a voter throughout the county can go into an election office, request a ballot, get a ballot, fill it out and turn it back in immediately. And she also suggests that we keep those open on the weekends or at night to make it more accessible. So, they have made this mail-in voting so accessible for the voter to reduce the lines at the polls and I think that's what it's going to do. So, I just want to, I want to thank them for that. Now, there was also an accusation, and this is probably my last point, about, it was the commission that was, you know, making it so you wouldn't receive results on election night. I believe making sure an election is right is much more important than the speed it was reported. There was an article in the Morning Call on January 22nd and that article claims waiting for results is an unintended consequence. Randall Wagner of Lancaster County says results will be later in the week. Forrest Lehman of Lycoming says your universe of uncounted ballots just blew up big time on election night. Tim Banyo, his county uses electronic books and he says he doesn't plan on counting immediately. I don't know if I want to open that can of worms on election night just because of how crazy it is. Philadelphia, largest county in the state, will hold off counting until after Election Day. Bucks County, Tim Freitag says, likely not done until a few days later. Now, remember, all these counties, except Lehigh, they're going to use paper books, okay? So, all this means that it's highly likely, most of the state's absentee ballots will be missing from election night results. In the article, the only county that claims to have results on election night is Northampton.
One minute.
That is under the direction of a newly appointed elections director, while all the other experienced directors say they're not going to have it. So, in the last meeting, I requested if we could use temporary employees and Kathy Bookvar, who's the Department of the State, she oversees elections, she also said that counties should plan for extra staffing. I suggested we use temporary employees, I did not ask for an army of employees. Now, as a taxpayer, I believe these are an expensive purchase. I don't think there's money in Act 77 for an electronic poll book, I think you should look closer into that. Act 77 provides money for the mandated equipment and electronic poll books were not mandated equipment. Therefore, I don't believe the state can give us money for them. The bill provides an issuance of bonds for voting systems. Electronic poll books are not identified as voting systems on the state's website. It also funds for election security and electronic poll books do not fall under election security. I could be wrong on this funding, so I'm asking you, before you sign the contract, to verify that. Again, I don't want to give our voters another piece of an electronic equipment after our last disaster. We lost their confidence in November and I would suggest a successful run with ESNS and Act 77 before we introduce anything else. I think we can learn from Iowa.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I did make an exception as she is the Chair of the Election Commission and this is an important decision, so we're going to stick to the five minutes, though beyond that. All right, and next I have is Ebony Sessento.
I'm sorry, I actually have a second.
That's okay, would you like anything to say? I mean, maybe you could brighten the mood?
[Laughter]
Say something positive? Hold on, I saw a hand, but just hold on a second. All right, so you don't have anything to say, right? Go Rovers. Okay. Just for that, you could get your sheet signed early and that was initiative on your part. All right, so next we have Lisa, I'm sorry, Garpolis.
Lisa Gatos.
If you could.
I do have one thing to say, I urge.
Could you please come up, though? I'm sorry, without the microphone, it's very difficult.
My name is Lisa Gatos and I do urge you to think seriously about not supporting the e-books and use the paper books.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gatos. Now, as far as the list goes, we don't have any on the list, but is there anyone else who would like to address counsel? Sir, I saw your hand before.
I didn't sign it, I didn't know.
That's all right, just come up, identify yourself and you have five minutes.
Greetings. Counsel of Northampton County, my first time here in 40 years. My name is Louis Shoup. I'm originally a native of Mount Bethel, Pennsylvania, I lived there for 20 years. I nowadays live in Allentown, Pennsylvania. Four years ago, I was involved in the recount in Lehigh County where I discovered how bad the tabulator machine in Lehigh County was at that time. I haven't been a poll worker since. What I'm holding here is a cantina. This is an amplified antenna used for Wi-Fi connections, this goes into your Wi-Fi adapter and using two of these, you can create a targeted Wi-Fi network between two points. I once did this back in 2004, creating a Wi-Fi contact point between Midtown Manhattan and Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey. Bluetooth works on the same frequency and I kind of sort of specialize in computer security, I've been doing it for about 30 years and I've been getting really back into it since I got my site back two years ago. Now, last summer, I had occasion to go to DEFCON, the biggest hacker con on the planet and I spent a lot of time at the Voting Village out there. Now, they don't have any ExpressVote VL machines out there, but I saw lots of others and I could wager that if I had unfettered access to one of these ExpressVote VLS, I can play Tetris on it in about an hour because they're basically computers under the hood. Do this thing, that thing, next thing you know, you load the code and there you are playing Tetris. So, I brought this with to.
Greetings. Counsel of Northampton County. My first time here in 40 years. My name is Louis Shoup. I'm originally a native of Mount Bethel, Pennsylvania. I lived there for 20 years. I nowadays live in Allentown, Pennsylvania. Four years ago, I was involved in the recount in Lehigh County where I discovered how bad the tabulator machine in Lehigh County was at that time. I haven't been a poll worker since. What I'm holding here is a cantina. This is an amplified antenna used for Wi-Fi connections. This goes into your Wi-Fi adapter, and using two of these, you can create a targeted Wi-Fi network between two points. I once did this back in 2004, creating a Wi-Fi contact point between Midtown Manhattan and Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey. Bluetooth works on the same frequency. And I kind of sort of specialize in computer security. I've been doing it for about 30 years, and I've been getting really back into it since I got my site back two years ago. Now, last summer, I had occasion to go to DEFCON, the biggest hacker con on the planet, and I spent a lot of time at the Voting Village out there. Now, they don't have any ExpressVote VL machines out there, but I saw lots of others, and I could wager that if I had unfettered access to one of these ExpressVote VLS, I can play Tetris on it in about an hour, because they're basically computers under the hood. Do this thing, that thing. Next thing you know, you load the code, and there you are playing Tetris. So I brought this with to demonstrate a point in that Bluetooth poll books also operate at 2.4 gigahertz, which is an unlicensed spectrum mandated by the FCC, so that anybody can use that frequency range for anything from microwave ovens to wireless cameras, baby monitors, walkie-talkies, anything like that at all. And it's real bad for gaming, because if you go to game on a Wi-Fi connection, and you're in a boss fight, and somebody fires up the microwave oven, your game is over. It's that simple. So with this Wi-Fi antenna, hypothetically speaking, I could jack this into a power source, okay? Power source of RF. Aim this at an electronic poll book, all right? And what could happen? At the very minimum, I could create a denial-of-service condition for that electronic Bluetooth poll book, much like the one that happened in Lehigh County two years ago in McCunchee. Now, I don't know what happened with that poll book. I haven't been a poll worker since 2016, but I'm going to guess somebody opened up a microwave oven or some other stupid bovine manure like that, and the Bluetooth poll book failed. And the reason it failed is because all Bluetooth poll books, all the 2.4 gigahertz stuff operates under Part FCC of the FCC rules, which I'm going to read into the record here. This device complies with Part 15 of the FCC rules. Operation is subject to the following two conditions. Number one, this device may not cause harmful interference. And number two, this device must accept any interference received, including interference that may cause undesirable operation. I would think that voting is a very desirable operation. You don't want to mess with that. Now, I'm working actually with other machines here to see if it's possible to either create a denial-of condition inside the voting machine itself by aiming RF at an unshielded machine. A majority of the voting machines I saw at DEFCON Voting Village in Las Vegas are not shielded. They were made out of plastic. So if I aim RF at an old computer that broadcasts or operates at around 25 megahertz, for example, I'm sure I can create some kind of denial-of service condition. Long story short, these electronic Bluetooth poll books are a bad idea. Why can't you print them in-house? Others do it. Why not Northampton County? In addition, ESNS is not the most reputable of company. I've spoken to many people at the DEFCON Voting Village, California State Representative Eric Swalwell, among them, for example, who believed that these electronic poll books were the wave of the future. They are not. Please, get rid of the electronic poll books. Get rid of ESNS. They're a disreputable company. Go back to paper. You'll be a lot better off, I promise. Thank you, and have a nice day.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address? All right, I tell you what, at the end of the aisle, if you would come up-- Yes, I only-- Okay. And I'll tell you what, if I don't, if I don't see you, if you're behind a wall or something-- Okay, well, you know what? As soon as she's finished, you come up, all right? And then I'll know you're covered. Okay?
Thank you for having me.
No, if you would just give your name to the--
I'm Karen Frey, F-R-E-Y. The Morning Call stated that other counties have been using iPads for the last six years with a few issues. But where, what were their issues? We don't know. Alan Brew said, "These are systems that could be hacked and subject to error. Act 77 just added more chaos to our voters for this presidential election. With the fraud," and I don't use this term lightly, "I find a suspect. Why this year do we have to make changes? Why don't you hire more people temporarily to educate them and have them help with the Voter Registration Department to help make things go smoother? I believe we'll have longer lines regardless of iPad registration or book registration, given the fact that this is a presidential election." So that, to me, really isn't an issue. As for the no-excuse mail-in ballot that can be dropped off until, I hope I'm correct, 8:00 PM on Election Day at night? I have a few questions. Where are the drop-off boxes going to be? Are they going to be watched by a human to make sure that nothing happens to those votes? Will they be able to answer questions to people dropping off their ballots? Who is going to transport the paper ballots from each voting precinct? And how will they be transported? After all, there was an incident in a general election in November where a forgotten container was left in a trunk of a car. It was found, but it was still left in the trunk. Is there going to be a duplicate paper that will need to be signed by the person transporting the paper ballots to the voter registration office? And a written receipt of the person receiving those ballots for verification of each and every box that comes from every voting precinct? It's just a checks and balances. As a concerned voter, I have a few questions regarding the ESNS voting machines. I agree with this young man over here because I've been investigating it also, and they are a very suspect company in many states. I just want, in writing, and be provided with special information on, one, where were the counties', where were the counties' selection and bidding process used to choose these specific voting machines? Two, were there any lobbying efforts being used? Three, do we have a standard that was provided by the state and the council, voted on, that was used in the selection process? Four, was there a bidding process? Five, did we have a comparative price and program process both on the machines and its use? Six, did we check references? And what questions were devised to be used in asking all companies? I'm saying example, like a rating, like they rated this machine a five or a 10. Okay, that kind of a rating, and was there more machines? Can you provide us with who were the finalists, the companies? Seven, finally, was a county provided by the bidders outlined pros and cons of their machine packages in relationship to price? What guarantees or service agreement was given to the county if the machines didn't work properly? What kind of due diligence did the county do on all the contenders? Can we, as voters, receive in writing this process or review, a reference for review, which could be put in a newspaper? The bottom line is, unless there's a detailed needs assessment and problem-solving bipartisan effort, the voters will perceive this as a voter suppression effort. The reason I'm saying this is that we're all hearing this is, will not happen again. Everything is taken care of. And in other words, a well-defined political excuses, not seemingly well-thought-out decisions, flimsy at best, and expedited explanations jammed down our throats. Our confidence in these voting machines is fragile, and now you want to introduce the ebooks. Pennsylvania has extra registrants in voting polls, which are being investigated right now. Allegheny, Bucks, Chester, and Delaware Counties. Let's do this right and keep Northampton County off the books, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The individual who was behind the poll that my vision didn't see, he's coming up, and then I will get to you, ma'am. When he's finished, you just come on up and give your name. If you could give your name, and we'll go from there.
My name is Jerry Pritchard. I live at 4280 Cassiopeia Drive, Lehigh Township. I'm a committee captain there at our central. My father was a committee captain there forever, over 30-some years. We worked polls. This is the first time, mass confusion. Machines. Mass confusion. I'm talking, we're talking generations of a family at a poll. First time. And here we go down the same road. So if something happens with these pads or whatever, I don't have technology. I don't have law. I have experience. Honestly. And I know most boards have their minds made up. And they come in, they get a vote, and they go that way. Don't you think that people right now need to just step back for a minute, slow down? I have my identification right here. God-given, my thumbprint. I have identification. We're so worried about so much. Why the change? Because it, we need to satisfy what we didn't like the last time, somehow. There's no reason. I have, I say this again, and I look at every one of you's. Experience. My father worked that precinct forever. I took over as the same captain, working that same precinct. Why? All of a sudden, we get a change in a machine. Here's chaos all over. And we know it. We can't, we're not in denial, right? We're in, we admit it, that there was a flaw in the machine. That is documented to the New York Times, to Reuters, all over, right? It's documentation. Why are we trying this again? If we know something works, why don't we go with it? Or does the board have its mind made up? You can let everybody speak, but if you have your mind made up, you're going to go right down that road. We admit it in a flaw. What will the answer be if it don't work? We're going to scramble? We are really going to scramble and point fingers? You know the best way to not get in that position? Don't do it. You don't do it, you won't be in that position. If you do it, all of a sudden, what happens on that night? Or what do we do? Scramble up here? Point fingers? Republican, Democrat, this one, this one, this, this party, that party, this, this executive? If we don't do it, we'll never have that worry. We didn't have that worry till them machines came along, right? We got to admit it. I'd never seen the New York Times and stuff here till those machines, right? If we don't do it, we can rest assured tonight that it don't happen. Think about that. If we do it, we're going to be thinking, what if it does? Who are we going to blame? County executive? We're going to blame these people? You're going to blame yourself. You have the power tonight to vote to say, no, we're going to stick with what we know. We're going to go with what we know. And these people go home, and you go home, and you don't have one worry. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you would come up and just give your name, please. Five minutes.
My name is Rachel Resenfeld, and I'm a resident of Upper McCunchee Township in Lehigh County. I am the Community Outreach Coordinator for the Sierra Club Pennsylvania Chapter. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Pennsylvania Chapter's 33,000 members, 5,000 supporters within Northampton County alone, to encourage Northampton County Council to pass the resolution before you this evening supporting House Bill 535, the PFOS Action Act. For decades, millions of people across the United States, including many in Pennsylvania, have unknowingly been exposed to drinking water contaminated with per- and polyfluorale alkaline substances, also known as PFOS. This class of toxic man-made chemicals has been found widely in oil- and water-resistant consumer products and firefighting foams. It has also been linked to a variety of cancers, impairments in children's growth, endocrine disruptions, disruptions, immune and thyroid system damage. So far, 610 sites in 43 states, including 17 drinking water systems in Pennsylvania, have been contaminated, particularly in communities near airports, military bases, and industrial sites. I'd like to point out two Pennsylvania examples. The first is the Willow Grove Naval Air Station in Montgomery County, which is, was found to have PFOS and PFOA, contamination as high as 86,000 parts per trillion in many of the wells on the base, and 1,000 parts per trillion in public wells near the base. These levels far exceed the 70 parts per trillion Lifetime Health Advisory level, which is non-enforceable, established by the Environmental Protection Agency for two dangerous PFOS substances, PFOA and PFOS. The second is a bit closer to home, Imesboro Public Water in Lehigh County. According to data from the Environmental Working Group, in 2014, they detected 22 parts per trillion for PFNA in their drinking water supply, while lower than, while lower than the levels-- Is that, is that a phone? Okay. While lower than the levels found in Montgomery County, even in these lower concentrations, PFOS has been found to have health impacts. The Environmental Working Group recommends a low, a limit as low as one part per trillion to be considered safe. The full extent of Pennsylvania's contamination in Penn-- The full extent of PFOS contamination in Pennsylvania remains unknown, but based on levels detected in other states like Michigan, Vermont, California, and New Jersey, we expect additional levels in groundwater near airports, fire training centers, and industrial sites to be contaminated. As PFOS chemicals cause people to live in fear over the safety of their drinking water and how it puts them and their families at risk, we believe it is time the federal government put safety of people ahead of polluters and regulate these hazardous substances while holding the corporations responsible, accountable. Thankfully, the U.S. House of Representatives took decisive action on January 10th, 2020, to address this national contamination crisis with the passes of the PFOS Action Act, HR 535, which aims to protect people and their families from these dangerous substances. Now, the Senate must pass the package of common sense legislation, and the President must sign it into law. These bills will take a critical step towards regulating PFOS by, one, requiring the EPA to deem new PFOS as presenting an unreasonable risk of injury to health and/or the environment, designating all PFOS as hazardous substances under the Comprehensive Environmental Response, Compensation and Liability Act of 1980, or CIRCLA, also known as the Superfund Act, and setting a maximum contaminant level for certain PFOS chemicals in drinking water. It is also worth mentioning that there are several bills currently held up in the Pennsylvania State Legislature dealing with generating funds for cleanup and environmental monitoring, listing PFOS as a hazardous substance under the Hazardous Sites Cleanup Act, and setting a Pennsylvania maximum contaminant level in drinking water. If PA continues to stall these bills, HR 535 is a hopeful step towards meaningful action for impacted communities. So you ask, why is it important that, at the county and local levels, to support this legislation? Well, I'll tell you. Because the most common sources of exposure to PFOS-contaminated drinking are through drinking water and food. While the main source of is through manufacturing sites that produce PFOS and/or use them in their products and industrial processes, over decades of unregulated wastewater discharges, illegal disposal, and air emissions have seeped into surface water and groundwater, polluting private wells and public drinking water supplies nationwide. Additional pathways for food and water contamination include disposal in landfills, otherwise called leachate, aqueous firefighting foams used to extinguish emergency blazes on military bases and airports.
Excuse me, have you almost finished? Your five minutes is up.
Yes, yes, I'll wrap up real quickly.
Take 30 seconds.
And PFOS-tainted sewage sludge or bio solids spread on farms. We have a lot of farmland in Northampton County, and Governor Wolf's PFOS Action Team initial report in 2019 indicates that state regulators suspect bio solids may contain PFOS, and research indicates that it may be a source of contamination on farms where this material is applied. We know that sewage sludge or residual semi-solid bio product of wastewater treatment plants has been found to contain these PFOS chemicals, and this puts our residents and the environment at risk. Overall, PFOS has been found in 99.7% of all human beings' blood. We all need assurance that our drinking water is safe. Please consider the impacted communities in Pennsylvania and around the country, and seriously consider the public health risk posed by PFOS contamination by supporting the resolution for HR 535, the PFOS Action Act.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And, yes, sir.
Thank you.
You should give your name to her.
Hi, Alan Brow. I'm the Vice Chair of the Elections Commission. You know, it's funny, I remember being here in December and running into Mr. McClure, and I went up to him very enthusiastically, and I shook his hand. I said, "Thank you," because I was really looking forward to being on the Elections Committee, but I realize now I was a little premature. So, but anyway, so things have been moving along, and I think it's actually great. I think it's exciting that we're having this discussion and really thinking about these things. But also, I kind of want to, I guess, put out an olive branch, because I think our committee is, our commission is terrific. I mean, I could not work with better people than I'm working with right now, people who are really dedicated to the citizens of Northampton County, people who are smart and bring a lot of different things to the table, and people who do research. And along those lines, we have so much information that could help with our current situation. For example, a lot of these issues about the poll books and printing. I was actually today talking to Marion Schneider, who's the President of the Verified Voting Association. And she was, and she's in Pennsylvania, but it's a national group. But she told me that there are some printers But she told me that there are some printers who can actually print quickly enough where you don't need supplemental poll books on paper. Also, are we not planning on doing a supplemental poll, I'm sorry, doing a paper poll book backup for these iPads that we're using? I mean, if the iPad crashes, what do we have left? I mean, you know, it'd be very easy to lose information, lose voters. So I really want to think about this carefully. You know, I know we've sort of gotten into sort of this contentious relationship at this point, because we voted the way we thought we should vote. We took a scientific approach, we communicated with each other, you have the minutes of the meeting, and there's really no bias, no motive, no anything, except to serve the voters of this county. And, you know, we're here for you. We want to work together, we have ideas, and I think that, you know, if we work together, we can get to a better solution here for the county. So that's all I'm saying, let's all work together.
Thank you, Mr. Brow. Is there anyone else who would like to address County Counsel under courtesy of the floor? Seeing no one, close that part, and we're going to move on to the County Executive Report. And I believe he probably has a report.
It's Dr. Brow still. He's a nice man and a good doctor, Dr. Brow. My report time is going to be taken by Amy Cozy, because while in life, in government, you're entitled to your opinion, as Ms. Hornick's speech was full of opinion, but you're really not entitled to your own facts, and Ms. Cozy, I think, has a point-by-point refutation of Ms. Hornick, the Chair Lady of the Elections Commission, who happens to be, by the way, the sister of the Republican Party Chair, which, if it doesn't call out for an amendment of the Charter to eliminate the party bosses from the selection process of, from the Elections Commission, I don't know what does. But, Ms. Cozy.
Can I ask a question before we start? Is this going to be, I know we're going to have a resolution put, it was recommended it was going to be put on the floor. Is this something to talk about now, or?
No, it is a --
You want her to give a primer?
-- refutation of the statements that Ms. Hornick made in an attempt to influence the outcome of the debate tonight.
All right, let me just say, for the purpose of our folks on the phone and for the audience, when somebody has the podium, I'm going to gavel out of order. I don't want any comments, I don't want any cat calls, I don't want anything. Everybody gets the same level of respect, regardless of what your position is. To our two council members on the phone and the representative from 10x, it's going to be, once we get into a full-blown discussion, I'm going to ask you, to any questions you have, and I'm saying this to the other members of council, to please go through the President so that I can be sure that the person, that the company that's on the phone hears the question loud and clear, so that we, you know, everything, because we happen to have three people on the phone right now. So with that, if we're all on the same page, at least with the rules of the game, Ms. Cozy, you have the podium.
I just wanted to address some of the claims that Maudany made during her comments. I, too, have done my due diligence, and I've spoken to the other counties, particularly the counties that had the same printer, NTS, that we did, that were also kind of left in a lurch in the way that we were. She mentioned Dauphin County. I did speak to Jerry extensively about what he was doing, and he did indicate that he was going to send PDF files to a local printer. I also spoke with the Tier Two of the Department of State, and they indicated that while they did send the registrar of Dauphin County PDFs, they were sent as a sample, so that he could find out if his local printer was capable of printing those files, and at that point, they were to apply with the Department of State to get access to the shore system so that they could print the MBD files like every other poll printing company is required to do by state law. Now, other counties may want to play fast and quick with the guidelines that the state puts forward, but as somebody else mentioned, the New York Times has shown up here, and we are under a microscope, under a microscope, under a microscope, so I'm going to follow the state guidelines as our registrar, first of all. Secondly, Randall from Lancaster County, another county that was also dropped by NTS, she said they weren't having problems. That's not true. I spoke to Randall as early as today. He was in the process of trying to acquire those shore, those high-speed shore printers that we spoke about earlier in Finance Committee. He felt like that was going to be his office's best chance of getting his poll books printed, because he could not find a printer that could print anything other than the PDF files, and also was not willing to use a file system that was not approved by the Department of State. So those two things are not entirely accurate. The Minuteman Press, so yes, she did reach out to them, yes, they were happy to print a 14 by 11 spiral-bound book, as most printers would be. But as I've explained earlier, there's a little bit more to that when it comes to printing poll books. You do need access to the state shore system. I contacted Minuteman Press, they've never printed poll books before, they do not have access to the state shore system, and they do not have the availability to print in the MBD format. So they can print books, but we can't use them. The paper backup that is required by law, yes, there's paper backup required by law, that is accurate. However, you do not have to have an individual paper backup poll, polling book for each location. Lehigh County, how they do it is, they have runners, just like we do here, we have six zones, we have a runner for each zone. Each one of those runners is given a copy or two of street lists printed from our state shore system that they carry around with them. So in worst-case apocalyptic scenario, they need to use that paper backup, our runner will take it to that precinct. That is how we would operate in this circumstance to accommodate that law as well. The Elections Offices, the Satellite Offices for, to accept ballots, we are aware of that accommodation, I think that that's great. Moving into this election, we already don't have enough staff to accommodate our own Elections Office. To turn around a Satellite Office in this short amount of time would be ridiculous. We have to, we have to make sure that we are implementing these five new state laws first. We have to make sure that we have our voting machines working properly, as we know what happened in November, that's a priority of ours, and we have to make sure that our voter rolls are up to date. That's our priority through the primary. Should all that go well, absolutely, we will consider Satellite Offices, but frankly, we need to have a priority straight and make sure that we have a smooth election. What else was mentioned? Okay. She mentioned the other counties said that they were not going to run their results the night of the election, and that that's fine. And that may be fine for the other counties. That's not our standard. We were told by the Department of State to get the equipment you needed to get the results election night. We did do that. We have those scanners, we have the capability of getting those results election night, so long as we can in a timely fashion make sure that people haven't voted twice. That's why we're here tonight, to make sure that we can have election results the night of the election. Should we get the e-poll books? We will have no problems doing that. And just because other counties aren't doing their due diligence to make sure they have those election results, I don't want to use that as a precedent for us to not work our hardest to do what the state asked us to do. There was, we talked about the Army of Temps, we talked about that in the Finance Committee, and where I stand with that, even if we could hire all the people in the world, like I mentioned, you've seen our Elections Office, we've created all of the workstations in that office space that we can possibly create at this time. We don't have anywhere to go with them. So unless you guys are looking to renovate that space on Union Street, turn it into a new Elections Office, I mean, you can think about it, but right now, we're at capacity. And somebody else mentioned issues with the e-poll books in Lehigh County. We actually do know what the issues were that one time that they had them. Tim actually forgot to erase the previous election, so people were not allowed to vote when they showed up. So that was the issue that happened in Lehigh County. I think that kind of concludes the points that were made.
Since you're taking the Executive Report, I know we have new business to discuss, but is there, are there any questions? You've heard folks come up, and this is our Chief Registor. Are there any questions that you'd like to put to Ms. Cozy right now? Is there anyone on council who has anything they'd like to ask her?
Yeah, I do. One of the things that was brought up was whether or not there would be reimbursement, and I raised that issue at the Finance Committee. Do you refute the claims that this may not be eligible for reimbursement?
I can't confirm or deny what the state is going to decide. We still haven't had confirmation on what we're going to be reimbursed for the voting equipment we've already purchased. So no, I don't know what our state legislature is going to decide on that front. I know that 100% with certainty, they're not going to pay for our paper poll books.
I know that as well. And I'll just add one other thing. I think bashing the Election Board when your party has the majority is counterproductive to having an election outcome that's satisfactory. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Cozy at this point? Seeing none, thank you. There may be some questions for you in a little while. All right, so I have old business, I have no old business to discuss. Is there any old business anyone has? Seeing none, we'll go to new business. Let me just say, I have a personal commitment, I actually didn't know if I could make it tonight, but this is important, so I'm here. At some point in the evening, I may have to leave, leaving it in Ms. Hefner's very capable hands, but I'm definitely going to be here for this. So what I said about, when Ms. Cozy came up, and I would reiterate to the folks on the phone, just so we can keep order in this process, we're going to start with, the first order of new business is the discussion and consideration of Article 13 Contract, 10x Software Solutions, and this was something that Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you please introduce? And we'll, once it's introduced, we'll have the discussion.
Whereas in Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Article 10, entitled Authorities, Boards, and Commissions, at Section 1007, Election Commission states functions, "The Election Commission shall administer the system of elections and the registration of voters under applicable law." And whereas the Northampton County Administration, the Election Commission Solicitor, and the Registrar of Elections advise that printed poll books are, be available for the primary election to be held on April 28, 2020, and electronic poll books are necessary to conduct a timely and legal primary. And whereas on February 3, 2020, Northampton County Council received a request from the County Executive for County Council to adopt a resolution approving a contract in the amount of $311,000, $311,150 with 10x Software Solutions, Inc., for the purpose, purchase e-poll books with supportive services. Now therefore be it resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby authorize the County Executive, as set forth in the attached documentation, to approve a contract with 10x Software Solutions, Inc., for the purchase of e-poll books with support service.
All right. Now, there's an error in the resolution, and so, excuse me, we're going to have to amend the resolution, the one part, what was the wording?
RB.
Go ahead, Mr. Slusser.
I obviously drew this in the third whereas, it currently reads in the third line, "Have advised that printed poll books are be available." That is, translation there, it was drawn by me as follows, "Have advised that printed poll books are not available." The word "be" should be amended to "not." And I think there was a memo that I sent to council for the phone call with Solicitor Rudis and Mr. Santino, I think he's here, the Election Board Commissioner, that they indicated to me that they were not available.
All right. I can make a motion that we amend the resolution in the manner that the Solicitor stated, so I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Zerinski, seconds. All right, so discussion on the amendment of the words. Seeing none, call for the vote.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
On the words?
Sorry?
No, the words. We're just, it's not the whole resolution. We're going to have, I'm sure we're going to have discussion. So, all right, call the roll.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Wensky.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, thank you. So other, that change, the resolution is as it stands, it has been introduced, and now we will open discussion on the resolution in front of you. Ms. Zerinski.
I want to know if there's an urgency on having to vote on this today, or if we could have a little bit more time to deliberate over the information that we've heard today and the information before us. I know that we have had it for a little time, but I do not want to make a hasty decision, given the last election and the decision that was made on the voting machines.
I would ask Ms. Cozy, if Ms. Hefner wants to come up, that's Ms. Cozy's decision. And also, I think Mr. Dertenger has been the administration's spearhead, if he wants to speak to this. The information that I have gotten to this point, and based on our, we had a discussion at the Finance Committee meeting about this, my take is, we are extremely under the gun on a timeframe. So, Ms. Cozy, could you address Ms. Zerinski's?
Yeah, so we went over the timeline a bit during Finance Committee. It takes six weeks for the e-poll books to arrive. We need a week for training, for the staff training.
You mean the electronic poll books, right?
Yes. That puts us in April to train our poll workers. So no, we do not have any more, we should have done this a month ago. We don't have any more time.
If we go with e-poll books, that's the urgency. If we don't go with poll books, what's going to happen? What's the outcome? I'm just trying to figure out the worst case.
It's going to be messy. That's the outcome.
I think there's a subtext. Based on what I've heard, I was at the Election Commission meeting, as well as Mr. Giovanni had said earlier, and I was there, I listened to what they said, and I listened to what you and Mr. Dertenger had addressed to them. Isn't the subtext of what you're saying is, we don't have a printer, it's your judgment and your office's judgment, we can't find a printer, so basically you're saying, we won't, it's not, we won't have printed poll books for the primary? Is that what you're saying?
My job is to figure out how we can conduct a clean election.
You haven't found a way to do it with paper?
This is the answer. We have not found a permanent fix with paper, no. Not under Act 77 with the timeline we've been handed by the state.
Okay, all right. I just want to be sure we're all on the same page, at least in terms of clarification. Mr. Myers, you had something you wanted to talk about?
I got to ask a question to Solicitor. With the Commission's recommendation, are we obligated legally, as the county, councilmen or commissioners, whatever you want to call us?
I would respond by saying that County Council is supreme in two areas. One is budgetary, and one is legislative. The Election Commission has no authority to appropriate money from this way. I'm sorry.
Any commission, any board, any committee of this county reports to this body when it comes to money.
Thanks, this is my question. I will speak later on this.
All right. And as I said, I know we have 10x on the phone, but as long as we have Ms. Cozy here right now, is there, as far as questions that might be, and you may end up having to be here while she's talking, I don't know how this is going to work, I'm going to try and keep it orderly. Any other questions right now, before I call in the, oh, who has a question?
I do.
Oh, Ms. Hefner.
Everybody keeps asking, why this, why now? Could you please answer that question?
This was not a toy that we wanted for the office. Act 77 came down with five changes to the election code, five major changes that we've not seen in Pennsylvania before. They cut our voter registration deadline to the election in half, and they've now allowed mail-in, no-excuse mail-in ballots to be submitted up until 8:00 PM on Election Day. That requires a massive coordination in my office. It's a massive effort to make sure that we are covering all of our bases, that nobody is voting twice, that we are keeping accurate records. We are the final line of defense, we are tasked with that. We are tasked with this Herculean effort that has been handed to us under a limited timeline during what will be a historic election year. I am asking for the tools for our office to carry it out successfully.
Can I also follow that up with a question? Can you answer why Act 77 came to be? Because again, I think this is being misperceived as Northampton County is just trying to throw the ball very quickly, and I don't think that's accurate, but I'm not sure.
That's not at all accurate. I'm kind of tired of hearing the rushed. I'm kind of tired of hearing the rushed narrative. Jill Stein sued the state of Pennsylvania. In a settlement, all of the counties were ordered to get new voting equipment before 2020. We acted in accordance with that settlement handed down to us from the state. It was an unfunded mandate that we had to comply with. We have done so. Everybody knows we had a bumpy election. So we have that on top of these five new election laws that were passed as a compromise to get us funding for that voting equipment that was handed down to us.
And the date of implementation of the unfunded mandate was?
It had to be by the primary election of this year.
Thank you.
Before bringing on the lady, Mr. Myers.
I got a couple of questions. So I comprehend this correctly, we're being mandated to make sure we have electronic?
No, we're being mandated to implement these five new election laws.
Okay. So, go ahead. So all this has to be in effect by?
April 28. Yes.
And with earlier discussion, I was under the impression, once we got these machines, that they would be at least three weeks, somewhere in there, for training?
No, we have a three-week window in which we can take the training.
Now, there are some things thrown out here today that kind of blew me out of the water. There's a new kid on the block, and somebody who's, can sit here and say 60 years ago, I wouldn't be sitting here if it wasn't for the right to vote. Okay? And I'm sitting here listening to people complain about machines when people of my generation were beaten, whipped, jailed, hung for the right to vote. And I'm sitting here listening as the only other black face in here, and I'm listening to people talk about stuff that's important, but is it relevant? Because you know what is important? We got to vote. We cannot not vote. And I'm reading in the newspaper, if we don't do this, we can't have an election. That's bullshit. We have to have an election. Now, for the people on the phone, excuse me, I'm not trying to be correct. I never have been in my entire life. I am what I am, a little street kid from Southside Eastern, and I'm going to put it out there like it is. We have got to correct this problem tonight. No ifs, ands, and buts about it. The man came up with a piece of equipment and said he could screw up a machine. To the girl in Tenneco, a question for you, you'd better have a good answer. Can our machines at any point be interfered with? And you can answer that when I'm done. But for the people in this room, understand something here, okay? I'm only talking 60 years ago. I'm 66 years old. When I came, my father got voted for the first time, and now I sit here as a representative of the people, not any damn party, a representative of the people. I can't afford one thing, to make sure people taken care of. Now, we're talking about a rather extra expense to hire people to do extra work, which you don't have the space for. These are machines, people. They're electronics. Unlike man, they can be fixed. For us, we got to go to the hospital and get parts. Let's think about it from that concept. We're making something that is very small, a damn mountain. Why are we putting ourselves through this? It's very important. We got one thing to do in life, and if you don't do it, shame on you, and that is vote. If we don't get this right, and believe me, I was sitting at the Eastern Democratic office when Reuters, 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 wherever the hell they are showed up and wanted to talk to people, and I walked away from the young lady. We are a hotbed. Yeah, we screwed up with the primary. Not we, I wasn't on at that time, but I'm part of the problem now. Okay? I'm also going to be part of the solution. We got to stop nitpicking and get to the core of the situation. While we're sitting here going back and forth about this voter suppression, you don't know what the hell voter suppression is. Three years ago, I went to vote. This is Pennsylvania. Do you believe somebody asked me to show them my damn ID? How many of you people had to go through that? I did. It's ridiculous what we're talking about right now. Think about what the hell we're talking about. Let's iron it out, straighten it out, and get the vote done. Period. I'm sorry.
That's all right. And I'm going to ask if, when we're finished here and I bring her on, then we'll get to your question. All right. Thank you, Ms. Myers, that's a great sense of perspective. I just would like to add to that, that I agree, I mean, we, people have said a lot of things, and one thing I'd like to keep in perspective is, I know someone complained about three or four minutes waiting to vote. There are people in countries who would give their eye teeth to stand in line for 24 hours to be able to vote for their representative. So if you want to hold that against me, by all means, hold it against me. I've stood in line with paper, without paper. I'll stand in line again for my right to vote, and if I can't stand, I'll get a paper ballot from Ms. Cozy, and I'll do it that way.
I'll get a chair.
But you get a chair, Ms. Myers will provide me a chair. So I mean, there are, we've heard a lot about this, and there's some things that I think are critical, and then there are things that just get brought in. And one thing that you brought to forefront was, this is about voting, which is a core county function. That is what we must do. It's not whether I like, or anybody up here likes electronics, or whether we like paper, it's how do we make sure that we are doing what the people that work full-time and the professionals tell us we have to do to assure the voters that they're going to vote. And by the way, I'd like someone to tell me the panacea in American history, having been an American history major, when there was a perfect election. Now, I'm not, well, I'm older than Mr. Myers, but the thing is, I can remember my grandfather telling me about standing outside the Cluckinsville Hotel and guys handing dollars and whatnot to people before they went to vote, saying, hey, you know, this is the good guy you would like to vote for, you'll see more of these. I mean, we have never had a perfect election in this nation. I don't even know if we came close. So I don't know this, and I grew up in the 50s, everybody longs for, there were a lot of things in the 50s that were great, and there were things that weren't so great. So I'm not afraid of a technology, and I do understand, and I want you to know, I respect the concerns people have. This isn't something that I really wanted to be dealing with, to be honest with you. I would prefer we had books. I would have preferred that, you know, a lot of things. But, you know, we are where we are, and I think we're going to have to, but we are going to have to have a discussion with the Tenex person. I'm disappointed they're not here physically. I'm sure there's a reason, but that disappoints me when we have a big contract and we get a phone in. But having said that, that, again, my disappointment isn't what's the core thing here, it's about getting this done. Anything for Ms. Hess before I bring in the representative?
Amy.
Amy, I'm sorry. This is what happens when we have two Amys. Yeah, should I stick with that, Amy? I just, maybe that's what I should do. I'm sorry. She took a beating in the general last year, and I didn't beat her, as though some people said, I applauded her, I think I beat up on Charles or somebody. But the thing was, it's, I'm going to bring her in, and Amy.
Tara.
Tara. Amy. Amy Zerinsky, go ahead.
Listen, all I want to say is, I think that people don't really understand the amount of pressure that this mandate has put on the county to get these elections right and to get the tools that are necessary to implement these elections. This is a huge lift to implement in a time constraint, with money constraints, with labor constraints, and I just want to say that I think that we are all trying to make the best decision, and I respect that you have worked so hard to get where you're at and give us all this information. I respect the Election Commission's decision, and I understand that one of the concerns was having one sort of election where there were no other variables, so we could have sort of like a controlled election. I don't think we have that luxury to be able to do that because of these time constraints. That would be optimal. That would be something that would be able to, we'd be able to say, okay, we have the ESNS machines, now they're operating with no other variables upon them. It doesn't seem like we have that luxury, and we've asked all the questions, and I know that there are some issues, but I think we have to respect the process and respect how we're trying to follow this, given all the constraints that we have. And I just want to, I just wanted to say that, because I think that we really need to understand that this is a mandate, we're put under a time constraint, and we're going to have to make a decision. There's no putting it off.
All right. I'm going to bring in Ms. Santiago, if there's nothing else, because I think we got to get her into this. I'm sorry, what? Oh. Ms. Santiago?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. All right. You're going to, you're on now, and what we're going to do is, we had a Finance Committee meeting, and we had a great discussion regarding issues with the company and what you're going to do and the costs and whatnot. And if there's a problem at some point with you don't hear it, I'm going to try and do this in a way that we don't talk over each other, so if you have difficulty, though, let me know, I just say something. But we, you're going to be on now, and I'm going to ask if anybody on council has anything they'd like to ask Ms. Santiago. We'll start. Mr. Myers has a question for you.
We had a young man come up here and give us a presentation with his trusty tool, that if he pointed this thing, would it be like a microwave that could block or interfere with your tablet? How correct is that? And is that a possibility? Did you hear that?
To my knowledge, yes, yes, I did. And I was, I paid very much attention to when that gentleman brought up that information. It's something that I immediately went to my development team and asked if that is in any way possible, or if that's anything that we, if we haven't looked into it, should we be looking into it? I was reassured that that is not possible. The Bluetooth capability that comes employed in the iPad can be disabled, especially if Northampton will not be using any type of Bluetooth accessory, which they have expressed that they will not. So if it takes that, then that's fine, we can turn it off if we need to. But again, I don't feel that there is any, and I don't want to sound rude or anything, but I'm not sure that there's any credibility in regard to our electronic poll books to that fact. Like I said, I did reach out to my team, see if there's anything that they could possibly give me about that information, and there's not.
All right. There's a follow-up on that from Mr. Myers again.
You know, I sold cars, so I was a pretty good salesman. I want a demonstration that that can't happen, and I'm just going to be as straightforward as you can get. If there's a possibility this can happen, you know, and I'm going to, I'm going to turn my expertise over to Tom Giovanni, because he knows more about this than I do.
Yes, he does. Well, so, all right, so that was a point you just wanted to make. You want to see a demonstration, and we can, I think we can have them look into that. Is there any, somebody else want to speak?
Not before we vote.
Mr. Giovanni, since he referenced you, maybe you, and you and I have talked about it too.
Yes. In the IT world, there is nothing that's impossible, nothing. There's always that small amount. Nothing's ever impossible. You can turn a Bluetooth off, I may be able to turn it on. There's nothing that's impossible in my world. That's all I want to say.
Okay, all right. So while we have her on, and I know we had a Finance Committee meeting, but I know any question, and that may not just be the poll book, but the contract itself. So Ms. Vargo Hefner is going to have a question for you.
Can I borrow your paper? We had a meeting tonight about the contract, and there was a question about what was covered in the maintenance costs and the, because you said there'd be an additional cost.
If I may ask, I don't know, somebody, if somebody could have their mute or something, we're getting some background feedback, I don't know if it's from the Santiago's site or from one of the two council members, but if you could use your mute, if you're not talking, that might help. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And maybe from?
All right, we're okay now. Go ahead, Ms. Hefner.
Did you hear the question? There was?
I heard that.
There was a clarification needed on what exactly was covered under the post-support and maintenance costs. Like, is it the book itself? Is it the programming? There wasn't identified on the contract, and so the question came up. Is it for the tablets themselves? Is it for upgrades?
Yeah, definitely. So for the post-year one support and maintenance, that includes, just like a down support and maintenance for the software. So any patches, any enhancements, any type of new programming detail that is added to the software, again, usually it's enhancements, or if there's a bug fix that has to be done to the application version, that's included in the support and maintenance, which is a $125 price per unit.
May I throw an amendment off of that? The $125 you have down as the precinct central annual software license after year one, the total numbers we worked out is if you took that $125 times the 350 tablets, you came up to the $43,750 cost, we're being told, would be the post-year one support and maintenance. And I guess the question is, so that $125 includes the relicensing, any software upgrades, any patches, and/or any hardware problems that we may have? Is that correct, or is that false?
So for everything except the hardware, the hardware is a little bit different. All of the touchpads, which is essentially the iPad, comes with a standard manufacturer one-year warranty. There is additional warranty that can be purchased after that if Northampton County feels like they need it. So that's something separate.
If you would just hold a minute, thank you. Are we talking about, like, when you buy a car, some extended warranty?
Yeah, that's what she's talking about.
Are we considering something like that?
Or apparatus that you use 20 hours a year.
Okay. Well, I take it that means, no, we're not.
Well, we'll see. Let's see what the experience is with it, and maybe we will.
Okay. And that would be a separate contract that would come to us. We're not bound by anything on this.
Correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to.
Manufacturer.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And so we're all on the same page. I'm sorry, Mr. Myers had?
The question you had asked earlier in the other meeting.
Yes.
If it gets beat up, is this part of the arrangement for replacement?
I think she's saying no.
That's right.
Mr. Myers said, to paraphrase, if there's a lot of usage on a tablet and there's a problem people have signing it or whatever, I would take it that after the one year, that's not covered under your current contract.
That's correct. I mean, we do, it's very few and far in between that we ever have a customer come to us and they just have like a completely demolished screen, a cracked screen, something that is just not responding to someone's touch when they're trying to operate the app. Depending on how long you've had the iPad, for instance, if you have an iPad and you start to have something go wrong with it after five or six years, we, I mean, we can work something out to where we can either replace it, or help you replace it, or get it repaired in any way. So it's not, I don't want to give off the idea that after the one year, if you guys do anything to it, we're hands-off, we're not going to help. We're still your vendor. We're still your vendor. We're still providing the hardware to you and will still provide you with options to help, again, repair it or replace it.
I hear you. Any other, do we have any other questions for, Mizurinsky is going to have a question. Is your mic on? Thank you.
Does that flip and share stand, will that protect the iPad enough if somebody drops it? Because this is going to be going through like a lot of hands in a day. I know it's a metal case, but there...
The flip, she said.
That would be hard to say.
Did you hear the question?
That would be hard to say.
She's asking about the flip and share stand?
Yeah.
Want to know?
Will that help protect the iPad at all? Because, you know, we're not getting the carrying case and things like that. Do you know what I mean?
I think I know. Do you want to know if it'll work?
No, I wanted to know if it'll protect it if it drops. Damage.
Well, is your flip and share, flip and what?
It's called a flip and share stand.
Your flip and share stand, does it protect it?
Yeah, I think I understand the question.
Okay.
And it does. So essentially, when the flip and share stand is closed, meaning the iPad is not being used, it's being stored in whatever area of storage you guys are going to have it in, it's offering a 360-degree protection to the iPad. I myself have dropped an iPad inside of a flip and share stand and nothing happened to it. They are, it's not a plastic stand, it's an aluminum hard stand. We know that there's going to be normal wear and tear. We've seen chips and dents in the paint. But as far as the flip and share stand still being able to open and flip towards the voter and protecting the iPad, it has had very good track record with that. I mean, we have counties that have been using Apple iPads since 2007 and they are being very well protected by the flip and share stand.
All right, thank you. Ms. Santiago, I'm just going to ask, we have two people on the phone, two council members. And before I look at any more people on the dais, Kevin or Peg, do either of you have any specific questions you'd like to get to this young lady?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we know you're in the sun, so you're fine.
I'm listening in, Ron. I'm good.
Mr. Lotter, you have anything?
No, I'm fine. I'm listening to the discussion.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the dais for this lady? Because if not, I'm going to ask her, is there anything, you were listening, we had a lot of people, courtesy of the floor, came up, a lot of comments made. We had Amy Cozy, our chief registrar came up and spoke to us, and the administration had made comments. Is there anything you heard that you would like to address that hasn't been brought up? Or that has been brought up, for that matter?
I don't believe so. I think the only thing that I would like to definitely portray to everybody that's listening, especially everybody there in the county that would be working with 10x, you know, if we are given the opportunity to implement some electronic poll books, is that I and the 10x team definitely understand the current climate of the elections in your county. And we understand that if we are to undertake a project like this, that we would be very sensitive to all of your security needs, making sure everything is correct. We do offer a lot of support and Amy and I talked about that before as well, that there's nothing, there's not a day during the implementation where you won't have someone to go to if you have questions or if something doesn't seem right or if you feel like the implementation is not going well. There's an entire team that is provided to every single customer and that's really kind of what I want to get across. I wouldn't want anyone to feel like they are now going to a new vendor and you have almost like a sketchy vibe about it. That's definitely not how we conduct business at all. If there's any questions about that, I don't mind answering anything further.
Are we doing a test run with her before the election?
Are you going to do a test run with your, if we vote for this, are you going to be doing a test run with the county before the election?
We can definitely do that. We can, we've done that a lot of times before with counties where they do a mock election prior to going live to ensure that all data transfers are being done correctly, that the touchpad is working properly, it's configured to exactly the way it should be. So that's something that we can do. If for any reason Northampton County feels like it is best to maybe do a partial rollout for this primary, again, just to kind of get a feel for the solution before going full county, that's also something that we have done before and it would not be an issue.
All right. I think that probably got your answer, that they can do it if we ask them to do it.
It should be done, it should be coordinated with the computer company. I'm sorry, it should be coordinated. Then if we're going to do this and we're going to do another run with our voting machines, it should be coordinated together at the same time?
I would...
Is that a problem?
Ask Ms. Cozy.
We do not have time to run a full-scale mock election before the primary. We're two and a half months out. It takes us, we have to do the LNA testing for our primary election a month out and we have to train our poll workers.
No, I'm not talking about a full scale.
We, the poll books, we can do anything you want to do because they require a lot less time to prepare. We are going to do a mock election before the general, absolutely, full scale with poll workers. We can do a mock election with the e-poll books, certainly. We can't send machines out to locations.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. I mean, if she's going to be here to do something and we are having the people come back who have the voting machines and they're going to give us, make sure we're 100% correct with that, can that be done at the same time, I guess is my question?
Like the LNA testing, is that what you're referring to?
If I can.
I don't think I'm understanding what you're asking.
Here's the thing, I think, we're not talking about a full rollout. Let's say this gets approved and we get these. And yes, because this has to coordinate. So he's asking, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie...
The voting machines and the e-poll books do not interact whatsoever.
We're well aware of that. What I'm asking is if we're going to be doing this role, if we're going to do that with the 10x book and the voting machines, can it be done in the same time at the same, can we have both companies here? Even though they don't mesh, we got to do, we're doing it anyway. Am I correct? We're not just going to roll out the machine and the voting machine, we claim they're fixed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to have a demo on those machines, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Why can't we coordinate that at the same time this is going on?
We can invite them to the same meeting.
At the same meeting.
What he means is...
You want machines here for a meeting.
If, he's saying that the night ESNS comes to demonstrate and re-show us their meeting that we would do a complete rollout with the poll book, with the machine and...
I'm sorry, I was misunderstanding what you were asking for.
All right. I thought I was talking English. That's okay.
It's okay. It's, Ms. Myers, it's a long night, it's a complicated topic and we're all... Ms. Zarensky.
Thanks. I thought you were going to do a tour with the ESNS machines again.
It's happening right now. We had...
Do we have a list of where all the tours are?
Yes. It's online. We update it every Tuesday. Right now, we already have 15 confirmed dates. We had a demonstration yesterday at the Palmer Library, it was on the news. We have one tomorrow as well. Yes. Tomorrow's Fork Township Community Center.
Can we get that?
We have the, we'll get a list.
I think we have a list.
We do.
Why did it take so much time to understand that we needed poll books?
It didn't. As soon as we found out about Act 77 and realized the logistics that we were going to be handed down, I think somebody mentioned the times and the dates that were on the quotes. We start, we were, that's when we were handed this. That's when the budget was passed. This is all the time that we've been given.
I appreciate that.
All right, Mr. McGee.
Piggybacking on Mr. Myers' concern about the compelling presentation for the 2.4 megahertz question. So 13 years you guys have been in existence and you're telling us that you haven't had any 2.4 breach issue. That was, it was very compelling, his presentation tonight.
Did you hear the question? Ms. Santiago?
I think I heard some of it. I'm sorry.
He wants to know if in the timeframe these machines have been out, you've never had an issue with the 2.4 megahertz apparatus that the gentleman had come up and given us the presentation, a breach or anything like that?
No, nothing. So once again, the only time the Bluetooth connection is used for the precinct central touchpads, which are our electronic poll books, is if a county is using a Bluetooth accessory such as a receipt printer. There are many counties and states using Bluetooth printers across the country. One of the oldest ones, having been implemented back in 2004, is still currently using the system with Bluetooth printers and there has never been an issue. If a Bluetooth printer, again, this is the Bluetooth accessory, if that ever breaks, and I'm not just talking about if someone tries to interfere with it as far as frequency-wise, but if it ever gets knocked over, breaks, that would never stop the check-in process on the actual electronic poll book.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Ms. Vargo Hefner has a question for you, Ms. Santiago.
Ms. Cozy stated in our earlier meeting, a timeline that we would not receive these for six weeks. Is that correct? Excuse me.
So there is time that has to be given for us to order the 350 touchpads. I did speak with fulfillment and we sourced all of our hardware, or at least the iPad hardware, from Tech Data. And we got an estimate that from the order date, we would have the iPads in our fulfillment center in about a week. After we receive them, we do have to configure them, enroll them in our MDM solution, do quite a bit of configuration on them. So it takes a bit of time. I would estimate from the order date to you guys receiving it, it would be about four to five weeks. Yes.
And in your, oh, sorry.
Well, no, that was my, I just wondered if there was any wiggle room to try to get these here sooner for Ms. Cozy to have a chance. We want them, yeah, we want them right, but what's reasonable?
We want it to be done right.
Right. Something that we can do and that we do a lot of times to accommodate training dates that you may have for your poll workers, is we could send half a shipment or at least, you know, 20 or 50 units to you, almost as a rush shipment, so that you have them within a couple of weeks, so that you can kind of play with them, see the configuration. As we're making updates, you know, changing language on the screen, whatever it might be, you have something in front of you to test with, including if you're wanting to do a type of mock election with the units in your office. So that's doable. But in relation to the entire 350 iPads being sent to you, it will take a few weeks.
And I think our registrar said to get her folks trained, she's looking at about a six-week training program, is that correct?
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
No, I said, even given the six-week shipment timeline and training our staff, that still gives us a three-week window in which to train our poll workers.
All right. So, okay, so I just want to get clear because your experience in sending these out, what has it been regarding the counties you've worked with that the folks they had, it was new for everybody at one point? What was the time that you've seen historically to get folks trained?
It normally doesn't take very long. So the way we do our trainings and having done statewide implementation for these electronic poll books, we have done trainings where we're not only training the county admin users that are going to be using the touchpads, but as well as the poll workers. We've done this in assembly style where we have about anywhere from 50 to 100 poll workers in a lecture hall. The training is about two to three hours and it's just walking them through setting up the electronic poll book at the polling location, getting logged in and running through a couple of different scenarios. If you have a voter in front of you that is an absentee requested, all of those different things are run through in that time. And normally there, besides that training, there's training manuals that the poll workers are able to go through and kind of refresh themselves prior to election day. But besides that, there's not a lot of training that's done afterwards for the electronic poll books. Any other training that's done is usually for any other election hardware that's being used at the polling locations, like voting machines.
All right, thank you.
There's not a lot of training.
All right, thank you. Mr. McGee has a question.
Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
How many people are you going to have on the ground here to either help with training or to help with our election?
For training, we do have onsite training options. So we would have, normally it's Bradley Campbell, he is our director of training. He has been doing trainings for years and years, not only with 10x, but when he was a county official in the election office as well. Normally, that's a full day of training that's done specifically for county admin users. So it goes over everything from the touchpad and the backend console monitoring, just all of those admin functions that have to happen prior to the election, during the election, and then post-election when you're getting your voter credit. There's onsite support that can be provided for some counties, like someone to be there the first day of early voting, as well as on election day. So there are those options. And as long as we are given enough time, kind of lead time, to make sure that we have someone that's available to be there, which is usually never an issue, we can have someone there to assist. And actually, talking with Amy as well, it seems like for Northampton and kind of the needs and wants that have been expressed, it'd probably be best as far as election day to have someone there the day of election and the day after as well to run any types of reports, just kind of wrapping up the election, making sure everything has been done.
So you'll be there to help with damage control if there's problems and to make sure that we have a successful election here in Northampton County, is that correct?
That's correct. So again, someone can definitely be, myself can be in the county on election day helping with any issues. I've done it before. This includes if there's ever anything going on at a polling location, you know, going there and seeing what the issue might be. Aside from just one person being onsite in your county, there's also the entire staff of 10x that is always on call during any election day.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Myers, you have one?
One more question.
All right, one more question.
That's a lie. 350 machines, who's going to be here to make sure they're working correctly from your company? I'm not expecting our people to do it, I'm expecting you to have somebody here. Who's going to be here to make sure they're working? And when are they going to be here?
To be...
We're buying, if we buy 350 machines, somebody's got to make sure they're here, they're working correctly, am I correct? Members?
That's correct.
So, yeah, he...
So there's logic, yeah, I believe I understand this question. So there's acceptance testing, so kind of to start from the very beginning and then going all the way through election day. From the very beginning, when any county receives hardware from us, there's logic and acceptance testing that should be done on every single unit to make sure that it's turning on properly, that the, just everything is working properly. We provide checklists that everyone would go, or I'm sorry, that one person or whoever is going through all of the touchpads when they're received, go through it. There's reports that are run prior to any iPad being deployed out to a polling location to make sure that they are registered correctly, to make sure that they have the correct data package on it as well. So not only is the county trained on how to do this, but the account manager, which would be myself, would be doing this as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And then on, when, sure, yeah. There's a lot more monitoring that we do just throughout the entire process as well. It's not just on election day.
Thank you. All right. Before we move on...
I just have one more question.
One more question, Ms. Rinsky.
Thank you. What we saw in Iowa was a configuration problem, or a problem with configuration. What we saw with ESNS was a configuration problem. How are you going to assure that these, each and every one of these iPads is configured properly? Even if you test a few of them before the election, the poll books? Because, I mean, that, that has been the problem with all of this technology, it seems. It's not that it's been hacked, it's not, it's been human errors in configuration. So that's a quality assurance issue that we had to address with ESNS that I'm not quite... Yeah, assured with. I want to know how you're going to assure that the quality of the configuration is such that we will not have a glitch on the day of election?
Of course. So, and that's very important, I completely agree. Human error is 100% able to be fixed. So during the implementation process, when we are going through the entire configuration of the touchpad from beginning to end, through every screen that the poll worker could ever possibly see on Election Day, not just the poll worker, but the voter as well, we do extensive testing on that. We provide those screens to the county. Numerous conference calls are done throughout the implementation process to make sure that it looks the way it should be, that it's reflecting election law properly, as well as just the specific configuration and language that Northampton County would want. After the package is created, so the final package that is going to be put on every single iPad when it's ready to go out and check in voters, we ask the county to check it. It's one packet that's created and is pushed down to every single one of the touchpads. So it's the same exact thing on every single touchpad. So if you check it on one, you're checking the, the logic of it on every single touchpad. There, from there, once we have the AOK, that the data looks correct, and it's been verified, and that the database is correct and has been verified by the county, which includes checking in voters on that live data, we've been cleared out afterwards, and we run reports on every single touchpad, make sure that, again, it's registered correctly, meaning it's going to go to the right location and that it has the correct package on it. These reports are run off of the briefing central console, which is the backend of the solution.
So you're saying that someone from the county has to verify that? And who is that person from the county that's going to verify that that packet is correct? Do we know?
I'm, I'm sorry, are you asking who in the county is going to verify?
Yeah, you said that the packet needed to be verified by someone in the county.
The other agent.
The other.
Entire office is to be trained how to do this.
I'm sorry, hold on, Ms. Santiago. Go ahead, hold on, Ms. Santiago, go ahead.
The entire office will be trained how to do this.
So it's not a single set of eyes?
No.
It's multiple eyes are going to be on it, so that we can cross...
We have learned from past practices that this is not information we want only one person in the office to have.
Right. We have a full gallery. I feel like we really need to answer all these questions to the fullest extent. Do you know what I mean? Like, we're talking about voter confidence here, and that's been eroded. So I'm trying to ask every question I could possibly think of.
And I think we have. I mean...
You know, it's only eight, 25.
Well, it's about two hours on this, and we, some of us, we were at 3:30 going on this meeting. I will say this, we, we've discussed this, we've, I think we've asked all the questions we can. We're going to be looking at this resolution now. All I can say from my standpoint is, having been around a long time, we have to have an election. We, we have to. And I understand the commission's vote, and I respect it, that's why I was there. My problem is, for me at least, is I didn't get a viable alternative to these eBooks. Believe me, no offense to Ms. Santiago, I'm not looking to spend 300, over $300,000 on electronic poll books. There's a lot of needs in this county, and we could certainly use that a lot of places. It would appear to be our only solution. I mean, we are ultimately the, the last resort here. We've, we've heard people say, "Don't trust," and we've heard history of where it's been used, and we've been told that this is the only way we can have a, a workable and legal primary. I mean, we're part-time legislators. We depend on the full-time folks that work here, and I, I, I was waiting to hear a viable, viable. I, I understand fears, I understand concerns, I understand wishes, I understand desires, but at the end of the day, we're charged with ensuring that on that day, people can show up and vote. And as Mr. Myers, I thought, very well, pointed out very well, there, there is a lot of things, problems in history of elections, but our main concern here is, I don't want anybody, you know, the last thing we need is a primary where people are trying to look at three or four different lists, and everybody gets confused, and there's problems. So I appreciate everything everybody had to say. Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Mr. Lot, Ms. Ferraro, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think it's been covered pretty well.
I think so too. Peg?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion amongst council? Mr. Kursik?
Yeah, a couple things. Earlier, I believe Ms. Vargo-Hefner asked the question, well, why are we here? The reason why we're here is simple, because Donald Trump won Pennsylvania in 2016, and fingers had to be pointed someplace. Now, I think as I read this resolution, the first thing that popped into my head, and this has come up before, and this body has faced it, it says, "The Election Commission shall administer the system of elections and the registration of voters under applicable law." In my experience, and I've been here for the purchase of three voting machines, systems, and every time, we've had a recommendation from our Election Commission. Now, if they're not acting under applicable law, I, you know, you can take them to court. I mean, that, that's something that could be done. I don't like it, but that's an alternative. Usually, the request comes, or the, their election board does make a recommendation to us. They have not, so my sense is that they should have been meeting before us. So, I, I mean, I don't know why the meetings were scheduled the way they were. So, you know, had they changed their mind and decided to go with the e-poll books, I, I would have backed them, as I have with, with the three election systems, two of which didn't exactly go over too well. But, you know, I, I've always felt that I have to pay deference to that board, barring something, you know, unusual. Now, I, I do like you, Mr. Heckman, I won a successful election, but I, I think that a lot of confidence was eroded with what happened last fall. And I, I just don't feel like this is the right time to introduce another piece of technology when we still haven't figured out the one that we implemented last year. There are 60 other counties that are going to be able to produce paper. And earlier this evening, we even heard from Ms. Cozy, who said that she had not heard back, I believe it from, was Baxter and...
Barton and Cooney.
Barton and Cooney, who are producing the poll books for the City of Philadelphia and Montgomery County. I would have liked to have heard back from them definitively whether or not that, that could be done before we took a vote this evening. And, you know, lastly, I think, you know, the financial part of it bothers me as well, that, you know, on, on the one hand, we were told that this would be eligible for reimbursement from the state, and I, I've heard otherwise. I hope we are reimbursed, but, you know, from what I've seen with the State of Pennsylvania, Commonwealth, they like to call themselves, they're, they're not often too willing to share the wealth when it comes to, to county spending. So again, I, I do want a successful election. I, I fully intend to vote, and no matter what system we use, I'll, I'll be at the Williams Township Eastern District to see how it goes. But I, I won't be supporting this purchase, not now, but I, I would if the Election Board had supported it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Mr. McGee?
I appreciate everybody's passion in the room tonight. I appreciate everybody's passion in the room tonight. It seems like there's a lot of people that are in support of not getting the poll books. And I understand what the duties are of council, and I understand what the duties are of the Election Commission, and I understand the duties of what the administration are. But collectively, I think we need to conduct a functional county election, all right? Our county needs the proper tools. My yes vote tonight, okay, is to ensure that all these tools are in place. We have to have an election. And we, and I was, I was here last, last meeting, I was here at the Finance Committee meeting, I heard all the discussion about the, the time constraints. We need to give them the tools that they need, and let them do their job. And if this is one of the tools that they think they need, I, I think it's important that, that we give them these tools. And so that's, that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say? And yes, I did put in the part about the Home Rule Charter with the Election Commission on purpose, because I think this is something we both know from our experience, that Home Rule Charter, the Home Rule Charter is what, 40 years old now? And at best, it's, it's a compromise of compromises, and at worst, maybe it's, it's, it has, it has multiple things that really need to be reviewed as to how things break out, and I think they sort of put things in at the fly because they didn't know exactly what to do or how to do it. And actually, I think our entire form of county government here, probably at this, after 40 years, could have some review, see if it's working well or if not. But, I mean, I have to say, I'm, I'm supporting this based on the information that I'm getting from, from the people I have to rely on. I mean, I'm sitting here, I, I've got to rely on the folks we, we hire to do this and do the research, and I don't, I'm, I'm at a loss to know what else I can do. But anyway, that's, that's why I, I put the resolution out. Anything else before I call for the vote? Ms. Vargo-Hefner, and then we will mercifully call for a vote.
My concern in having the meeting that I did tonight was fiscal. I thought we needed to have answers about the finances, and I thought we needed to do it in a timely way. None of us here are responsible for scheduling the commission meetings. I understand they're going to have one when we're done tonight, but my motive in having this was to make sure that whatever the decision was, that our job is to provide the money. And so that if we approve the money, and two weeks from now, they're ready to go, that the monies are, that we don't delay the process of advocating the money, because it sounds like we can't. So if we advocate the mon, if we allocate the money tonight, and they want to wait a week and figure it out, and it still meets her timeline, then that's up to the rest of them. But our job is to allocate the money to make sure they have the tools to do their job. And that's why I'll be voting yes for this. It doesn't mean they're going to go out and order it tomorrow, they're going to have a meeting in about an hour. And so I want them to have whatever they need at their disposal.
Very good. See, no further discuss...
No, I just had a question. Sorry. So you're saying that we're just approving the monetary portion of this, and that the Election Commission will still have to vote?
No, that's not in. What it, what she, what's in it and what she's saying is, this hereby authorizes, the county executive has set forth to approve a contract with 10x. We're not saying what day he approves it, we're not saying...
We're just authorizing the contract, is what you're saying.
We're authorizing him the ability to spend the money on this contract if they do this, if they sign the contract. Yes.
If they sign...
We're not telling him to do anything other than he can have the money.
I know, I'm just clarifying.
That's the clarification. I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
I understand that. It's been a long day for me too. I just want to make sure I have all the information.
Yeah. No, I mean, you're right. We, we... Yeah, we're saying, basically, we're saying it's, they want it, and we're authorizing the money, so I could say, yeah, sure, they're probably going to go buy it, I would think, probably quickly. Okay. Let's call the vote.
Ms. Vargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to two.
Thank you. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to call a recess now for five minutes. It's 8:33. We will be back, and I'll reconvene at 8:38. Thank you.
Jesus Christ.
Yeah, recess for five minutes, people need to...
Because we have a whole lot of work ahead of us. You know I move it, but I got to pee.
I'll tell you what, had, there were two things that needed to happen for me to vote yes. The election last year had to have gone well, number one. And number two, the election board was supposed to make a recommendation, so... And I'll tell you what.
These kids have curfews.
See what happened?
I know.
I've been calling Mr. Capora.
Correct.
No Falcone, he becomes a... I invited a teacher every time. I've been doing this for twelve years. The teacher shouldn't pop, that's good behavior.
I didn't know that one made it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was your teacher there?
No, no.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're, you're not going home tonight. You're not going home. You want to sleep in my house? Where we?
Wacky. You're a number one.
I'm going.
No.
What do they need an ad? Somebody needed an agenda?
Yeah, those radio guys really know how to fill airspace, don't they? Did somebody need an agenda?
Been there, and I know of it.
Ryan. Thank you. How long did it take? Do you ever stay up?
I don't know where else to go to.
It's not, it's not good for marital...
Tara can sign for you. Tara, sign these nice kids' stuffs, please.
I'll leave it.
That's all I was here for.
I was here until 2:00 or 6:00 anyway. I'm going to be in a zone. I need to know who's going to like be screaming.
Where's the...
I don't know.
Hopefully not.
I have my, I have my...
And I got in bed and she said...
I just came for the beauty.
You.
Have you lived in?
Nowhere.
Vanguard.
The time where they recently...
38, I thought, I said...
How many? Five thousand?
I read his, when I was a kid, when I was in college.
Hey, Brian.
I read Hall Rule. It's about a 15-page book.
Thank you. Mr. Myers.
Did we discuss this at the last meeting?
We discussed this at the Energy Environmental Committee meeting, and we also discussed it a little bit at the previous meeting. Ms. Rosenfeld also gave a three-minute speech. She could probably answer any other questions that you had.
I, I was just trying to refresh my memory.
Mr. Myers, if there's any discussion, could you guys go in the hall, please? It's just, it's, we're picking it up, up here. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Myers, continue.
I was just following up, because I thought we had spoken about this before. Okay, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
I had some concerns, but I spoke with Ms. Zirinsky, and I'm, I'm good.
Good to hear. All right, so let's call, let's call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yep.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have consideration of approval to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a traffic signal resolution, and this is Mr. Myers, if you would introduce the resolution.
Okay. Be it hereby resolved by authority of the County Council, that the County of Northampton County, and it is hereby resolved by the authority of the same, that the Director of Public Works said County of Northampton authorized direct to submit an attached application to traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and to sign this application on behalf of the county.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? This has been discussed. Very good. Call for the vote.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the consideration of the codification resolution for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you please introduce this?
Whereas Northampton County Charter Section 606(c) requires the Northampton County Council to provide by resolution a codification of all ordinances as amended, having the force and effect of law and of the charter as amended. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Northampton County Council that the attached codification for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen shall be adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty. I don't have an attachment.
It's sixty-four page.
Oh, okay.
The attachment is sixty-four pages.
Thanks for saving the train.
All right. Discussion. Practice standard. None? Call for a vote.
Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have consideration of approval to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a traffic signal resolution, and this is Mr. Myers, if you would introduce the resolution.
Okay. Be it hereby resolved by authority of the County Council, that the County of Northampton County, and it is hereby resolved by the authority of the same, that the Director of Public Works said County of Northampton authorized direct to submit an attached application to traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and to sign this application on behalf of the county.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? This has been discussed. Very good. Call for the vote.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the consideration of the codification resolution for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you please introduce this?
Whereas Northampton County Charter Section 606(c) requires the Northampton County Council to provide by resolution a codification of all ordinances as amended, having the force and effect of law and of the charter as amended. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Northampton County Council that the attached codification for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen shall be adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty. I don't have an attachment.
It's sixty-four page.
Oh, okay.
The attachment is sixty-four pages.
Thanks for saving the train.
All right. Discussion. Practice standard. None? Call for a vote.
Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have consideration of approval to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a traffic signal resolution, and this is Mr. Myers, if you would introduce the resolution.
Okay. Be it hereby resolved by authority of the County Council, that the County of Northampton County, and it is hereby resolved by the authority of the same, that the Director of Public Works said County of Northampton authorized direct to submit an attached application to traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and to sign this application on behalf of the county.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? This has been discussed. Very good. Call for the vote.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the consideration of the codification resolution for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you please introduce this?
Whereas Northampton County Charter Section 606(c) requires the Northampton County Council to provide by resolution a codification of all ordinances as amended, having the force and effect of law and of the charter as amended. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Northampton County Council that the attached codification for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen shall be adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty. I don't have an attachment.
It's okay. It's sixty-four page.
Oh, okay.
The attachment is sixty-four pages.
Thanks for saving the train.
All right. Discussion. Practice standard. None? Call for a vote.
Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a donation from the Pennsylvania Farmers Union for the Industrial Hemp Symposium Resolution. Ms. Zirinsky, would you please introduce that?
Whereas the Pennsylvania Farmers Union is desirous of donating a hundred dollars for the hemp industrial, industrial hemp symposium, now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the county executive to accept on behalf of the Northampton County the donation of a hundred dollars from the Pennsylvania Farmers Union for the Industrial Hemp Symposium.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussion. Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a resolution regarding the taxation of deactivated mobile homes. Ms. Vargo Hefner?
No.
What, I'm sorry. What did I miss?
This one.
Oh, excuse me. I, I think, force of habit wanting to skip that time, no. Consideration of a resolution regarding the purchase of 150 South Union Street East. Ms. Hefner?
Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that ordinance number 681-2019 be deemed a purchase in lieu of condemnation.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzic.
Yeah, I just, I need a clarification on this. We passed an ordinance, and now we're doing a resolution. I guess my question is, why aren't we going back and amending the ordinance? This doesn't seem like the proper procedure.
Could, is there someone from the administration that would like to clarify?
Why? Oh, Mr., solicitor or somebody?
Mr. Taylor's here. Mr. Taylor's here. I would report to the board that I spoke with Mr. Taylor and had the concerns that Mr. Kuz, I'm sorry. That Mr. Kuzic had. There was an issue as to the taxability of the transaction. I think I sent a memo to council, or at least.
All right.
To everyone about that. It was my considered opinion that it was a tax-exempt transaction. There was some concern for Mr. Taylor in the conversation that there may be taxability from the grantor, which this resolution would solve. So, Mr. Taylor, I don't mean to throw you under the bus or steal your show, but-
No, no, that's correct. We just wanted to clarify the tax-
But there's the bus. There you go. So, well, no, I mean, Mr. Kuz-
Yeah, I, I guess my-
What exactly is the-
Right. I guess my, my concern is, is that typically, this is, when we pass an ordinance, and there's something not included, or something needed to be changed or added, we amend the ordinance. I guess I'm wondering why this, we have a resolution that clarify, seems to clarify an ordinance. It just, it doesn't make sense to me why we wouldn't just reintroduce and do an amendment to the ordinance that we passed.
Just our reading and understanding of the law, that wasn't necessary for this type of change. We're just clarifying.
If I could just jump in here, if it comes back from the Department of Revenue that there is a, a tax consequence, this, this resolution would solve that issue, would be attached to the affidavit of value for exemption of the transaction. It's clearly not taxable.
His mic's on, he's just, speaks softly.
I'm sorry. The resolution would resolve, for all purposes, the Department of Revenue, when they look at these transactions on occasion, it comes back for review by the Bureau, and certainly this would solve that issue totally. And I would say that I, I had the concerns, but I think the resolution is appropriate.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussions regarding the resolution? Seeing none, let's call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.[1326.08]